Amy, how much, how much do I owe you?
Okay.
Okay.
That's your guy, Bruce.
Yeah, get him in line, Frank.
Yeah, get ready. Like the call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of February 10th, 2022, to order at 6 o'clock PM, and ask Clerk Simmski for roll call, please.
Mayor Gunder.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo is absent tonight. Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Samanovic.
Here.
Attorney Zimmanek, I believe is remote.
I'm lying.
I heard him. Uh, Village Manager May.
Here.
Assistant Village Manager Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome. Uh, first item is open forum. If anybody's here that wants to talk about something not on the agenda, now's the time. Seeing no one, I closed the open forum and move on to reports. Uh, the first is my report, and I'd ask Deputy Chief O'Hair to give us an update on COVID-19.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, unfortunately, COVID, uh, remains a hot topic, uh, but fortunately, cases have been trending down over the past month. As I'm sure, uh, many of you are aware, the governor is going to lessen the mask mandate starting February 28th, except for in schools, hospitals, nursing homes, and several other facilities. However, each village, municipality, uh, can also make their own rules. Uh, some statistics for Illinois, test positivity rates are at 7.5. Cases are down 66%. Hospitalizations are down 63%. Um, unfortunately, deaths are still up at this time. In DuPage County, uh, the positivity rate is at 8%, but trending down. Hospitalizations are decreasing rapidly. DuPage cases to date are 2,000, 200,000, uh, 931, along with 1,723 deaths. Westmont cases are 4,914, with 97 deaths and no new deaths within the past two weeks. Um, in DuPage County, 75% of residents are vaccinated, 83% have at least one shot onboard, and 53% have received their booster. And on a final note, uh, DuPage County Health Department has, um, brought back their testing site at the fairgrounds, and that will be back up and running March 1st.
Thank you.
And that is it for my report.
No, I, I have one thing to, um, to add is that we, meaning the village and the manager, follow the state and the county guidelines. So we always follow those guidelines when we're setting our policies here. And do have to mention, because I've received some emails, um, the mayor or the village doesn't have any power to regulate school districts as far as masks or no masks. I've been emailed several times, re- asking me to step in, and it's illegal what they're doing, and I think Manager May has replied. Those are two separate governmental entities, and they have their own elected board, and they have their own attorney. So, um, we follow the state, we follow the county. That's up to them individually to make that choice. So, anybody questions? If not, I'll move on. Park District Winter Beer Fest, this event will be at Taiwana Park on February the 19th. You can still sign up at the Park District website at westmontparks.org. And this is a good, congratulations, Westmont High School. We had, uh, last Friday, there were several people introduced into the Westmont High School Athletics Hall of Fame. They include Annie Carlson, Jack McInerney, and Joe Morganfield, and all the, and all the members of the 1998 Boys Cross Country Team. I want to congratulate all of those individuals and the team. The U.S. Luge Tryouts, um, they're coming to Westmont again in June. Uh, stay tuned for the dates. And this is exciting. The National Swimming Meet is coming to Westmont. USA Swimming, the national organization responsible for selecting and training athletes for national and international competitions, including the Olympics, has announced that they will be coming to Westmont, Illinois, to host a Pro Swim Series event. This event has been scheduled to take place in March 2nd to the 5th at the FMC Naterium in Westmont. More info will be published on the village website soon. I do have to say, they are also in the planning process to bring other major national events here. Um, so that's going to be good for our businesses in town, the hotel and restaurants, and it's exciting to have them, uh, come to Westmont. My la- uh, last item, and this is Manager May's, uh, doing, is that Metra has listened to us as far as the crossing. We've had complaints, why don't they raise the gates? And, um, they sit there so long. So, Manager May contacted Metra, and they are now westbound, going far enough that the gates come up on a passenger train. That never happened before.
Or it didn't happen often enough.
Yeah, now it's, if, now it's all, i- if the train's not long enough, if it's, they have to stop at a certain point. But most of them are allowing the gates to go up. That's huge. I thank you.
You haven't seen it during this meeting, but even like in the last committee meeting, you see me pop up and look out the window, because I'm checking to see if the intersection cleared or not. And I, you know, I've, I've got a log. So, but, you know, performance is good now, and it was pointed out to them back around Thanksgiving, and we've made adjustments, and.
The word got out. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll turn to Clerk Simmski.
Okay, I just want to announce all the information on the nomination forms for the Westmont Citizen of the Year program. All those papers are available at the Village Hall, the Westmont Chamber Office, and online at westmontchamber.com. The deadline to submit nominations is Friday, March 4th at noon.
Thank you. Trustee Brady.
The, uh, Westmont Restaurant Week is scheduled from Thursday, February 17th through Sunday the 27th. For special prices, uh, see the fixed menus, which will be in the Chamber website for a list of participating restaurants. Also, I'd like to congratulate the, uh, Westmont Fire Department, who sent volunteers to, uh, recent fire that was, um, up in a north suburb. And also, they sent volunteers to Kentucky, as well as the, uh, Westmont Police Department sent volunteers to Kentucky. Two friends of mine who live in the, uh, Fort Knox area, uh, they were really impressed with the number of people that came out to support them, because these houses are all leveled. Uh, there was very few hotels, hotels in the area. So the volunteers from our area, they were very, very appreciative of what we've done. Here we are, so far from Westmont, we're close to 400 miles away from Kentucky. So I want to congratulate the police and the fire department for assisting fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Guzzo, unfortunately, is home. I hope she's feeling better. Uh, her report would be that the Fire Public Safety Committee, the next meeting will be March 10th, 2022, at 4:30 right here at Village Hall. The annual report, the 2021 Fire Department's annual report has been published online. The Fire Department will make the in-person presentation as a report at the next Fire Safety Committee meeting. And she reminds everybody to shovel around your fire hydrants. We asked residents, if you have a fire hydrant near you, please help shovel the snow away for, so they could be seen. And that's all she had. Trustee Samanovic.
Thank you. Um, the next Police Public Safety Committee meeting will be April 21st. Um, the annual report has been posted, uh, up on the website. If you haven't taken a look at all of the wonderful things the department has done in the last year, it's worth a, worth a look. The Westmont Police Department is hiring. Applications are being accepted now through February 22nd at iosolutions.com. Additional information can also be found on the village website. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Nero.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Our next Public Works meeting will be March 24th, right here at Village Hall, 4:30. Um, and just a quick update on our winter, winter snow totals and salt usage. So far, we've had just over 20 inches of snow, and have used 750 tons of road salt and 7,700 pounds of bag salt. Uh, so all the trucks you hear driving around town, that's, that's quite a bit of work they've been doing. And again, we appreciate all their efforts. I know we all get compliments. I think that's like the most thing we get complimented on. Uh, but it's amazing how, how great they do, and they're always committed to it. So we appreciate that. And so far, only four water main breaks. And I think that's a testament to our ongoing maintenance and the good job that our Public Works Director Ramsey does with his team. And, uh, that is all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and our budgeting for main replacements.
That's right.
Uh, has paid off.
Yep.
Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. The next Administration Finance Committee meeting will be held February 24th. That's two weeks from tonight at 4:30, right here in Village Hall. We'd like to welcome Sanilda Abbas to our Accounting Specialist. She started on Monday, February 7th, in the business office, so welcome. Um, the village is soon be implementing a new billing system for waste hauling, and water service details will soon be published on the village website, so please be looking for that one. The village has digitally published their first edition of the new Westmont Community Newsletter on the village website. Starting in March, the Westmont Community Newsletter will be printed and distributed to the entire community. We also have a new Peace, Hope, and Love Project that has three components going on in the village right now. Businesses can sign up to have a mural painted on their windows. Then the vil- the community is invited to visit these businesses, take selfies with the murals, and finally, they can participate in the Peace, Hope, and Love Art and Essay Contest. So sign up at westmontevents.com. And then last item is, eight Westmont businesses will be participating this year, with each business hosting food and beverage specialties, as well as fun activities. This will be the St. Patty's Jig and Swig Event. The event will be held on Saturday, March 12th. Sign up again at westmontevents.com. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, um, to recap, the EIC meeting that was held on Monday night, February 7th, um, the ki- committee wanted to thank the staff, um, for all their work and, uh, necessary steps to achieve a bronze level so, so smart, uh, in the Soul Smart Program. Uh, we're grateful for all the work that's been done to do that, and the fact that, uh, you know, the residents brought that through the committee to the board and the staff, and it was acted on. Um, so we're grateful for that. They were gla- very glad to hear it. And then the EIC member, um, Krista and our former liaison, Staff Liaison John, are going to participate in Environmental Roundtable Forum with Congressman Caston on, uh, February 14th. So they're representing Westmont, uh, you know, village and staff here, and, uh, we're proud of them and glad that they're able to participate in that. And then the EIC is developing initial plans for Richmond Education Gardens Ribbon Cutting Event, along with, uh, the first conversations about programming at that site. So that, you know, it's finally becoming real, and all the work, uh, you know, with Clarity Hills as a partner, uh, where we'll be abusing that this summer. Now, we're, we're happy about that. Um, the No-Mo Till Mother's Day program is off and running. We have, uh, 50 people signed up so far, and you can get more information on it on the village website. There's also the composting yard waste, the brush pickup. All begin on April 4th. Uh, sign up for composting is also, uh, is done through, sorry, wastemanagement.com. And the Sustainability Saturday Collection Event is hosted by Scares, and this is a special collection event. It's Saturday, March 19th, 2020, at 9:00 AM to noon at Benedictine University. There's a large list of items that will be accepted, including paint, electronics, TVs, and monitors, clothes, and more. And some items have a required minimum disposal fee. But that's one of the topics that we're concerned about, is how do we get rid of these things that are kind of problematic? You can't just throw them in your trash can. At least you can, but you're not supposed to. And, uh, it's environmentally that we take advantage of these kinds of events. So EIC is, uh, and the village is promoting that, that people take advantage of that event held by Scares. Um, that is all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And one more item before we move on. The Page Mares and Managers Conference is actively, uh, campaigning to get the local government distribution fund closer to what it was supposed to be. It's supposed to be when it passed, I think in '11. The state was going to collect sales tax, so we didn't do it, and they were supposed to distribute that to the municipalities by 10%. Through the years, it's gotten down to roughly 6%. And there's a bill now to, um, get it to 8%. It's got some movement to it. So we're hoping we can convince powers that be that, um, we've had meetings with different, um, elected officials, and, um, we got a lot of them onboard. So we're hoping that the state can get us back at least closer to 10% and not keep reducing. If that happens, I, I, Spencer, I'm going to turn to him. I think it's well over half a million, 750,000 a year.
Yeah, I think that sounds about right.
So just, there's a lot more we can use that for locally, for our residents. So we're campaigning, and all the, all the, the councils of government throughout the state have signed on, and they're trying to, um, get the state to do that. So it's got movement this year. We're not fighting to keep them from reducing it. Hopefully, it's going to go up a little bit. So it's huge money for our town. That was our money. So, um, that's it. Consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they would like to see removed? Then I'd ask Manager May to please read.
On the consent agenda, first is Village Board Minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held January 27th, 2022. It's followed by Finance Ordinance Number 20 in the aggregate amount of $2,090,171.33. We have a few purchase orders. First one, Safe Step LLC, $25,000. This is for the professional concrete saw cutting, uh, to, to address trip hazards. Next purchase order is Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, $20,875 for the annual chamber, the external funding payment. This is payment two of two. Uh, next purchase order, Visu Sewer of Illinois, $22,800 is for sewer jetting, or the cleaning of the storm sewers from the inside. And Public Safety Direct is the next purchase order, $44,050.74 for upfitting of the replacement patrol vehicles, uh, that were ordered. The total of those purchase orders is $112,725.74, together with Finance Ordinance Number 20. That amounts to $2,202,897.07. And that's the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve as read?
Motion to approve is read, Little.
Second, Samanovic.
Motion made. Second, any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you know where the sewer jetting is taking place? Is it the entire village, or is it a separate section?
You know, I don't know the locations, but it's, it's usually problematic, uh, area. So we have a small jetter in the department that we can do some routine things, but this is professional. It's not just sewer jetting. I mean, they, they have like root cutters and, uh, bigger, or videotaping, video, uh, inspecting, uh, the sewers as well. So, I mean, I, I can let you know what the locations are, but I don't know.
Does Mike, Mr. Ramsey know? He's up there.
Mr. Ramsey, being online, do you have a, a, a project area, or is it a certain amount?
Uh, it's a little bit of both. We do have certain areas that we have. I'm, I, I don't have the list in front of me, but there are some, like you said, that have, that we can't do on our own, because there is some tree root cutting involved. Um, but there are, but for right now, yeah, it's, you know, we use it pretty much throughout the entire village. But there are some problematic areas that we're aware of, that we need to get taken care of right away. So part of it, we'll be taking care of that, and then the rest of it, we'll just, we'll have, we have a whole list that we just go off the list, uh, and we hit each spot as much as we possibly can.
If you have a location of interest, you can certainly let me know. We'll check it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing then roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Samanovic.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes. Motion passes. New Business B, repeal of the water rate adjustment ordinance. Board to consider an ordinance repealing Ordinance 20-022 passed on March 12th, 2020 regarding water rate increases. And I got Assistant Village Manager Parker to give us some more detail.
So this is largely a housekeeping issue, and just kind of getting our ordinances back in line with where they should be. As you may recall, right before the pandemic became causing lots of issues specifically for us in our area, we had passed an ordinance to increase water rates according to a plan that was established several years ago. As you'll recall, once the pandemic hit, we decided we wanted to be careful not to add any additional costs onto our residents, and so we decided not to implement that water rate increase. We have talked previously about, now that we've got access to the ARPA funds and the ability to use that for some water infrastructure, offsetting those increases, and instead of having rates start when they should have been increasing back in 2020, instead wait until 2023 to have the first of these increases coming again. And then it was noticed by Jim Cates, our water supervisor, that our ordinance still reflected the rates that we were planning to change them to right before the pandemic hit. So this really just cleans that up and sets the stage for our incre- next increase not happening until 2023.
Do I have a motion? Motion to approve. Nero?
Second.
Barker? Motion made. Second. Comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Samanovic.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business B, and this being a relatively quiet, um, agenda, um, I've asked Deputy Chief Mulhern, and I do have a silence button right here, um, that, uh.
Thank you.
Since we passed the moratorium on gaming for this calendar year, in order to review where we've been, what's going on, um, this is the first start of it. And it's basically just going to be kind of an introduction. There's going to be subsequent meetings at Administration and Finance over the next several months. But this is the first that Tom's prepared, um, to kind of bring the board where, where we've been and where we are. So, yes.
Just elaborate a little bit. The, and, and this is just for clarification purposes for anybody listening. What we're actually, what we're literally talking about are Class 22 and 23 liquor licenses. Uh, gaming is regulated by the Illinois Gaming Board. We do have our local ordinances as to whether or not we accommodate that or not, uh, you know, as a, as a business. But we regulate it through the liquor licenses, and that's why Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulhern will be presenting on this topic. And, you know, starting with an overview, I guess.
Well, and, and New Business B is Class 22 and Class 23 Liquor License, Board to Review Section 10-36 of the Municipal Code covering Class 22 and 23 Liquor License Restrictions and Requirements. Mr. Mulhern.
And I could stay as above the clouds as high as you want to go, or I can get down under the weeds. However, the board takes it. Um, as you know, there was a moratorium put in place, uh, through for 2022, so that the board can take its time and review everything. Usually, we tend to do is at separate meetings, we piecemeal little things together. So it's decided that best, let's sit down, take a, you know, uh, in-depth and, and, and go in the weeds kind of review. Where does the village want to go from here? What would you prefer in the future? And my recommendation, our recommendation is that that be done before December 1st. But in that way, we can enact any other changes or make any changes we have to. We have the year through which to do this. There's no rush. There's no hurry. So our goal, or our plan is to, in the upcoming Admin Finance meetings, to, uh, discuss this pretty much at every meeting, and figure we're, and give you an up-to-date thing. If I could digress for one quick moment. This morning, um, Mayor and I participated in a tobacco, uh, hearing. Mayor, as you know, was also the Tobacco Commissioner, and I was the Liquor Commissioner. And, uh, we had nine violators, uh, which some were multiple, some were two or three-year, uh, two-year violators, some were first-time violators. Um, they were fined accordingly, all, uh, stipulated to their violations. Um, and in a total aggregate, uh, cost was, uh, $5,700, and fines were issued. So I just wanted to bring that.
And the goal is not to get the revenue or the money. The goal is to get them to conform to the rules and regulations. And, and there's a series of fines that escalate if it's within a five-year period. So we had three of them that had their second.
Right.
So, um, and we're going to be reviewing those fees with the board, or I'll let you see what we're proposing, because it really doesn't need board, just a couple things. But in the future, I'll let you, uh, see what the, what our structure is.
Right. And one other thing to mention, as the mayor's mentioned at the hearing, is that we don't do this for monetary purposes. The monetary is a fine, and it kind of to en- to entice or make sure the people, and do what they're supposed to do. But the Police Department is part of a, a, a grant, I believe, uh, where they get money annually, and they're required to go out and conduct so many enforcement checks a year. And so that drives our violation. There's an enforcement check when someone violates, as with liquor, someone violates it, the actual clerk gets arrested, and then we take action against the licensee. So I just wanted to go on there real quick.
Not this clerk.
Yeah.
No, no.
Whoever this person has sold the individual.
Yeah, that, the selling clerk. Agents, with, no, that's agent. Um, on, on the video gaming, and I know I've, I've given updates, annual updates and other updates, and as we go along, but, so I'm not going to go, I'm trying not to repeat everything as I has in the past, but, um, just to mention that since October, in October 21st of 2009, the village originally, the board opted out of video gaming. They had a choice, do you want to opt in or opt out? And they could do either way. And it wasn't until December 17th of 2012 that several business owners approached the board and asked them to revisit and, and rescind that or change their mind. And at that time, if you remember, we were going through a national, uh, economic crisis. Um, the business owners were suffering greatly. Um, they were afraid that, that they're going to lose, uh, their customers to competitors in other towns, because the competitors have video gaming. They would never come back, uh, to, to Westmont. So it was decided that, uh, the, as the board has said, they want to help, sub- restaurants. They want the restaurants to survive. So at that time, the board's main goal was to help the restaurants, so they permitted video gaming, and that started the process. What wasn't expected was these video gaming cafes, and how they're proliferating all over the place. Board's original intent was to assist restaurant owners, help them get through the year, help them, you know, stay in place. Luckily, and I could say knock on wood, they're all still with us. They're all still here. Were, you know, they were claiming that, and it's, and I think it was rightfully so. If they didn't get the gaming, they'd have to close up. So the, they, it's, it's helped them through a lot of hard times. However, the board, and then I'll include this board as well, uh, towards the video gaming, it's not kind of what the goal of what the board wanted. They didn't really want these video games, but it's included. So part of the problems were, back, um, with the, uh, video gaming cafes when they first came in, we different, we didn't differentiate between restaurants and gaming cafes. But we required the gaming cafes to be a restaurant. And unfortunately, their food was, you get a microwave hot dog or a microwave hamburger. You really didn't get, uh, a full meal or a decent meal. And so with that being said, the, the board decided, well, we need to do something to address this. So then we created a separate license class. That's where we have the classes that you have today, a Class 22 and a Class 23. Class 22 are for your video gaming cafes, Laura's Places, uh, Dottie's, Penny's. Uh, I almost spoke, almost just spoke there for a second. Um, but, uh, those are the cafes. Your other ones are restaurants that you have. You have Absolutely Delicious, Johnny Blitz, Papa Pacero's, Margie's, you know, they're all restaurants, and they're bona fide restaurants. So, um, one of the questions that we, in the- So one of the questions that we, and the board keeps running up to, where do we want to go? I still continue to get phone calls. The moratorium has cut down a lot of them. But I still continue to get phone calls, I want to open a video gaming cafe. The latest one we had was Circle K at Casanagin, the gas station there. They want to remodel the inside, but they also want to have a gaming ability. They want to have a liquor license, sit-down liquor so they can have gaming. And that's, so it's not going to go away, it's going to continue. So that's why, sitting with the mayor and the manager, kind of like, where do you want to go? Rather than me coming back at each meeting asking, what do you want to do? Maybe we could put our plans for the future in place now. And again, there's no rush, we have the whole year to do this. Our recommendation, or my recommendation, is we take the year. We don't rush and get this done by, you know, April or May, there's no hurry on this. But we sit down and look at it, and then whatever questions you have, whatever research you need me to do, I would say, please let me know, let the manager know, and he'll ferret that down to me. And I'll get any information that you have that you would need. Another issue was the downtown business area, the Central Business District. The board went back and forth as, you know, they didn't want to have a strip mall, is what they first described it. But you didn't want to have, you know, six, seven different businesses all in line altogether, because then it becomes like a mini Las Vegas, I guess, is what they're concerned. So they instituted a 500-foot distance between licensed places. And then we started getting more and more requests for the downtown business area, which you see today. You have the Potbelly, you have Johnny Blitz, you have Absolutely Delicious. Around the corner, you have the Uptown, all within, you know, just either next door, right adjacent to each other. Is that something that the board wanted? So the board decided to undo or rescind the 500-foot rule, and went to the basis, is what you work on today, is it's on a case-by-case basis. You, I give you a report when I do a review of an applicant, and it includes distances, includes the past history. It's all the criteria which you need to consider to decide if you want to issue a license. And so that's based on a case-by-case basis. If you feel that, you know, something is too close to each other, you could say no. And, or if you just, you know, and Trustee Barker, I don't mean to signal you out, but you have steadfastly said that you, you know, approve of the businesses, but just not in favor of the video gaming. And I recognize and I realize that, is that something how the rest of the board wants to go? So that's something to talk about, the distance, and I know in talking with the mayor, the downtown business district. Is that something that we want to go? We just had a request, another request from another business in that 0 to 100 block wanting video gaming. And we told them that, no, you can't have it because of the moratorium. And that would have been right across the street from where all these other places are right now. So that's a decision, and then one of the criteria that the board looked like for the 500 feet was the physical appearance, or, you know, whether it looked like a casino operation. The impact on surrounding property values, based on all these businesses all in place. Potential for loitering, which we really haven't seen in any video gaming place since the institution, this program or the gaming. The potential for casino-like operations to be located in a strip mall, or in its case, the Central Business District. And the potential prevention of redevelopment in a street or block or strip mall and further into the village's comprehensive land use plan. Those are all the reasons why they instituted the 500 feet. And again, to the appearance. So that's something we would like to discuss with the board and see where do we want to go, get your feelings and decisions where to go. So that 500 feet was rescinded, you're now acting on a case-by-case basis. And again, too, the downtown area, how do you wish to have that in the future, you know, do you have it played out? You have, up north, you have Bishop's Chili and Neat, you know, adjacent right next to each other. And then downtown, those businesses that I mentioned.
And again, just to point out, the board can enact the moratorium in B-1 district if they want, and then open it up. So that's sort of things we're going to be talking about as we move on, so, go ahead.
And also under Class 23, as we talked about before, Trustee Barker brought to us, and now we have an enforcement tool in place, is that the gaming is a amenity, it's not the reason for the business. You're supposed to be a restaurant first, your primary business is that of a restaurant, and not video gaming. And we have one business where, with the village manager, Assistant Village Manager Parker, were able to, now with the tool, using our places for eating stacks, determine, you know, what are you doing? Are you doing more places for eatings, or are you doing more video gaming? And we have a business that we bought in front of the Liquor Commissioner for a hearing. And right now, we're monitoring them, was, they gave them three months to try to turn their act around because they were clearly supposed to be a restaurant, and they're clearly a video gaming cafe. And we're working on trying to help them turn that around. And so we're also, as Trustee, we mentioned the last one, El Delphine. I mean, it's another one that also kind of like given us red flags. And we've told them, at the board meeting here, we told them, and since then, I sent them a letter, you know, advising them, you got to make sure you're a restaurant first and not video gaming. And their video gaming is active, as of, I think, three weeks ago, I stopped in and did a site visit.
And Tom, to add to that, I mean, revenue is not the reason we're doing this, because revenue, as you can see, is extremely well for video gaming. We're doing this so that all of our restaurants don't turn into cafes, and all they do then is video gaming. Because when you do video gaming, then it's, we eliminated those cafes. So we're going to keep an eye on it, regulate it, so that they remain a restaurant.
And...
Can I ask a question? Where do the, where does the net terminal income come from on each business? Is that provided directly from the machines of the state?
Yes, that's based on the amount played per terminal.
So what I'm getting at is the business owner isn't giving us that, the state is.
No, as I was thinking, all our funds or fees come from the state. So all the winnings and everything is controlled, everything is to the state, state gives us our funds. And then that net terminal income is split three ways between the business owner, the vendor that provides the video gaming.
So this is real state-driven data, not a business owner filling out a sales tax form?
No, the way we derive this, and I'll let Spencer explain it more, because I learned from him this week. If you, if you look at the monthly of video gaming, which is... It looks like this, it's my fiscal year 2022. You'll see towards the right-hand side, you'll see terminals played. That information, what you see there is the net, not the net terminal income, but that's what the village receives. So the state gets the money, and the state sends it to us, and I'll let Spencer explain that.
But the machines themselves self-report, right, to the Illinois Gaming Board?
They all connected?
That's his question.
Okay.
And the figures in the spreadsheet are things that Tom gets each month from the state's website. So all the data is from the states, it's not just coming from the individual businesses.
So how could we have one place without saying the name, and I know it's four terminals, but so much less? I mean, is, are they, just no one's playing them at that restaurant? I mean, what's, that's a pretty big difference, you know?
There's, there's a couple that are new. I mean, you take El Delphine, that's not even on here yet.
Yeah, right.
We haven't had a monthly report. You look at, well, it's public record, Absolutely Delicious was the most recent one. He's only been here, I think, the year when active, a couple of months ago, yeah. And then the rest, it's, your video gaming cafes, and Mayor's done site visits, and I have as well, too. There's a, there's a waiting list. You walk in, and the terminals are all filled. I mean, Mayor had an example, the guy said, he goes, well, come on back in an hour, hopefully there's a terminal open for you.
It's crazy. I just expected him to be doing better with it, that's all.
Which goes, I guess, to show that people are going there as a restaurant, not the video game.
That's right, yeah.
And so that, that's a good thing. All, they all came in here, and they told all of you, I want this as an amenity, my customers, my customers want it, I want to offer it to them. It's not that we're showcasing it. But however, if you look at the cafes, it's a site, it's obviously a different situation.
Now, when you look at those numbers, I don't think taxes have been, you know, so when a business gets X amount, I'm sure taxes have to come out of that, I would imagine a third or so, so.
Is that automated?
But it's still very profitable.
Is it like sales tax, where they pay us months later and some don't pay, or is it automatically paid?
I think taxes, federal taxes for them to claim it.
So if I was, I think what the mayor started, if I was a business owner, and I'm getting $100,000 a year from profit.
That's income tax, yeah.
That has to be, yes.
But our portion, is that automatically deposited? Or do they got to pay that after the fact? It's a lot of money. I'm just curious if it's an automated slick process the state put together, or is it just like sales tax?
I believe that it's a more automated slick process that the state put together. I believe that's how it is. It's not as delayed.
So we get all our money, you're saying, this is all received?
Yes, so we receive all of this, the exact amount that the state says we should be receiving is what we get. The state gives us the check for that, and it's not, clearly is delayed in sales tax, for example. It's just right away.
I didn't know that, thank you.
Bitcoin.
And again, when we...
Or you could go two for one, no.
When we originally passed this, the revenue for us wasn't the goal. It was to help our existing businesses, and then we got caught by surprise by the cafes, taking an empty storefront. They'll make it beautiful, and then it became just gaming. And so we've, we put all these measures in place over the years to where we're at today, so.
And when I get calls from prospective applicants, you know, we've had the one, well, you need more gaming in town. Why is that? Well, because if you look at your revenues, they're so high, so many people are playing your games, that means your town is attracting it, you need to have more terminals. So more terminals means more playing. It's like, well, it's not what we want. And the other ones, too, is, you mean, your village doesn't want money? Your village is turning down money? It's more of a concern for us, the appearance and the image of our village than the revenue. Yes, the revenue is great, and I can't say that I'm saying no to revenue. But we also consider the others to be of a high value as well.
And we put in the year, for a new business, you have to wait a year.
Yep.
So you proved to us that you're a legitimate restaurant, so that was put into place, too, so.
Yep, yep, yep.
And then I have a review here, and I'll get it to you, I'll send it to the village manager and ask him to distribute to you. But just as we said, that all business owners, everything is controlled by the Illinois Gaming Board. Yes, they got to have a local license, but everything is controlled by them. They control the operation, they control the taxing, the paying, everything like that. If there's a violation, they handle this, not us. We still retain jurisdiction in handling any liquor violations that occur on a gaming license premises. But if anything to do with the machines, anything to do with any illegal or suspicious contact, that's done by the Illinois Gaming Board. They have private, they have called private investigators, they have investigators. Most of the investigators are retired law enforcement personnel or former law enforcement personnel and/or active on-duty state police troopers. So they come out, they come out and they do inspections, they do spot inspections. One question I keep getting, asking, well, we do our underage enforcement checks for liquor, can we do them for the state? That's their jurisdiction, not ours.
And when they come in, there's no warning, they just come in?
Correct. They did that a couple of years ago, they just showed up at some places, and they can...
They found the Super Bowl pool.
Yep.
And they confiscated all the money.
I remember.
Yeah, so.
Had two of those.
God forbid, someone does Super Bowl squares. Good thing they had time for that. I got another question. Sorry, this is really interesting.
No, that's why, that's why we're here.
Has there ever been any talk, so it seems to be like municipality gets hosed in this deal? I, I mean, the state's making it, the owners are making it, and I don't know what other entities, but we get the smallest amount.
We get a tip.
Yeah, we get, we got to do, it seems like most of the work. Is there any talk about maybe two-page mayors or the state level to, I know it's probably, you know...
Home rule, I think probably, I don't know what other.
I don't know if that influences it, it's just, you just make the decision whether you want to do it at all or not.
3%.
Geez, the state got a hell of a deal.
You can license the terminals, we can do that locally and change that amount.
Yeah.
But that's just an annual...
It just, prior to this new law going in, it allows non-home rule communities to charge up to $2.50. Ours was $25, $25. Home rule communities, and I know I mentioned Willbrook, they're at 1,000 a machine.
And I know, years, two years ago, I was talking to the former chief of Oprah Terrace, and he said that, he, he's kind of like my position there. He says they charge them, again, this was years ago, $1,000 per terminal. And there's no squawking, there's no pushback, there's no nothing.
Yeah, look at them making.
Exactly.
Can you look at this, no one should balk at a...
No, they should be thinking.
Also, each, each business is allowed to have up to six terminals, that was just increased. It was five, I think late last year, they upgraded it to six. Which again, allows more, you know, profit for the business, but also more revenue for us. And that's decided by the business owner. He decides how many terminals he wants. That's why you'll see some that have four. And you'll see some that have six. And I'm sure if they want, they could have more, some of them, if they had the space. But as of right now, they're, they're limited to a total of six. Back when this program, I keep on saying program, but back when this was allowed, the big concern was it's going to attract crime, it's going to pull crime to Westmont, it's going to, you know, be a source for crime. We've had only two reported instances of criminal activity involving video gaming since 2013. Both were burglaries overnight, where a group came in and tried to pry open the ATMs. In both of the cases, local other towns were also getting hit as well. It wasn't just Westmont, it was local towns. They both are involving task forces by the state, so they're...
None while they were open?
No, yeah, they, they got in and then tried to pry open the ATM. The one they were successful, the other one, they were not. So you look at crime, it's, it wasn't, it hasn't materialized as people thought at the very beginning. On licensing, we now have 21 video gaming licenses. The forms you'll see in front, you say 20, that doesn't include El Delphine. And we have 118 terminals in operation in the village. A business, and if they want a video gaming license, they first have to have a liquor license. So 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 8, 9, and 12. A lot of people ask, well, okay, Prestige Liquors was interested in having video gaming with their sit-down tasting room. That class is not included in this list, so that's one thing we look at, too. They have to have one of these licensed, they have to pay that fee, have to have that license in place first, and then the 22 and 23 are on top of that. There's only a one-time fee for a Class 23 of $500, so when a business comes in, they're issued their, first year they're issued their Class 23, they pay the $500 fee, and then nothing else. They have to pay their annual fee for their regular liquor license, but nothing else for video gaming. So is that something we want to do?
The attorney said that, and John's up there, he said, we can't add to that because it's like, the regular license allows to have a different license. So I already asked him, can we charge that annually? And if John, you're there, if you want to comment.
And repeat the question again, can we charge the, what, annually?
Can we increase the price for a video, Class 22 or Class 23 license? You have your Class 1, 2, or 3 license, but can you, right now, we charge $500, a one-time fee of $500, can we charge more than that?
Or every year, charge $500?
For the ancillary license.
For the Class 23, correct?
Yes, you can charge, change, and increase the initial license fee, and if you want to, you can make it a recurring annual fee as well.
Then we should do that. Where just like annual fee for all the other classes, this should be a 500, or whatever it is.
That's why, that's why we're here.
But our current practice is, the ones that we don't charge the recurring annual fee to are just the Class 23, right? So they already have their regular liquor license.
Right.
And they do pay the recurring fee for that one, they just don't pay it for the Class 23. The people that only have a Class 22 liquor license, and that's their only kind of liquor license, they do pay a recurring fee for that license.
But John, can we make...
Yeah.
Them pay, everybody pay an annual fee, no matter if you're Class 22 or 23?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And I think the rationale for keeping the fee to a one-time fee and keeping it low was, this was, allowing video gaming was an attempt to help businesses, restaurants that were struggling, and allow them to have some extra income. And, you know, now, I think restaurants are, and hopefully in the future, will start to do better. And, you know, and maybe it's time to rethink that.
Okay, we'll look at that for next calendar year.
And seeing also, as well, I know that, but also how successful gaming has been. I mean, not only revenue for the village, but revenue for the owners and for the state.
Thank you.
The, what's another thing here? We talked about terminal stickers right now, for this year, the last year will be $25. The board enacted an ordinance recently where it will be $250 per terminal. Any amusement device in the village is required to have a sticker attached, stick whatever attached to it. So if you had pinball machines, or, what would I say, a pool table, they have to have a...
Ending machines.
Yeah, so we added that, so these machines, they're the only ones, the others would not be increased, only the video gaming machines. And again, Mayor mentioned the 365-day period, and that period was instituted for two reasons. A, I'll recall Trustee Barry, I remember he said, it's like super secret probation. It's an, you have to show us that you can obey the rules, and it's like a probation period. You have one year to show us that you're going to obey the rules and act responsibly with serving of alcohol. But also, it gives the village a chance to see, are you reliant upon video gaming? Or is your business going to be that of a restaurant? Many times I get a call, and I mentioned the 365, and the question is, can you survive without video gaming? And the answer is no. That's, then you're not a restaurant, you're a gaming cafe. This is, if you can survive for a year without gaming and still be here in a year from now, different story.
And you may be getting to it, but a restaurant in our ordinance, it just says the primary function needs to be a restaurant. It doesn't give any number, but we've been viewing it primarily... but we've been viewing it, primary means over 50% of your business has to come from the restaurant side, which includes alcohol, and not the gaming. And that's why we, we brought the one in front of us and fined them, and we're monitoring, and thanks trustee Barker, we're going to be monitoring that on a regular basis, all the businesses, so.
As I, as I look at the list here of existing, there's a few of them that I wonder if, you know, if the restaurant portion of this thing lags, and it becomes, you know, more of a bar, or a nightclub with video gaming, that isn't, that isn't the intention, that isn't what we voted for.
Correct.
That isn't what we want. And I don't know how we sort the food and the alcohol, but there's a, there's a few here that I have concerns about. And then I'm just wondering if, if, I don't remember the classification for Whiskey Hill, and what that would be, and in the future, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it, but in the future, would that be eligible for?
It would, because I believe they're going for a Class 1, 2, or 3, I'm not sure which. I haven't signed an application, but just from general knowledge, you could deny them. A, or B, they would be a restaurant. And I think their primary business would be that of a restaurant, but, you know, nine o'clock, 10 o'clock at night, you know, no one's, no one's ordering food anymore, they're opening, you know, or ordering beer. And I'll let Spencer address the difference between alcohol and food.
Yeah, I'll share my screen real quick, just to-
While you're doing that, B, we do have four businesses that have the class that are like a bar class. I think three or four, that, that doesn't, restaurant numbers don't apply. You know, you've got the Potbelly Uptown, Walsh's, and DJ's, all-
We knew that on the front end, that that's what they were.
Yeah, yeah, because, but everyone, after we eliminated the cafe or 22, has to primarily be a restaurant. So, go ahead, Spen.
So this chart that's showing right here is basically comparing the percentage of their, of the gross revenue. So if you say, how much did you make in sales of food and drink put together, compared to how much did you make in video gaming revenues? And so, the blue items are all Class 23, so these are all people, all businesses, that their primary business is not of video gaming, video gaming is just extra. And then the red ones are the ones where video gaming is supposed to be their primary, and the food is just extra.
Corporate cafes.
Yeah.
Yeah, food and drink together.
We have five of those cafes.
So you, you can see on here, there's one that doesn't quite fit with the rest of them. So there is one that, so most of the video gaming cafes are all hovering around, you know, between 0 and 5% of their revenue is coming from sale of food and drink, and so that means 95% of their revenue is coming from video gaming. And then you've got, on the other hand, the restaurants, where some of them are around 100%, and the lowest one that's kind of up in the group with everyone else is hovering right between 50 and 60% of their revenue, coming from the sale of food. So they really are primarily a restaurant. There is one where they're making between 90 to 95% of their revenue is coming from video gaming. And yet, they have a classification of a 23, which means video gaming is just supposed to be an ex, a nice extra. So we are, and that's the one that-
Well, that's one that's been in front of the mayor for a hearing, and they were given nine months to turn themselves around. They have to come back in front of the liquor commissioner at the end of nine months. We're monitoring them monthly. But if they don't, and they don't turn around, the mayor has an option of either suspending their license, implementing a fine, and/or revocation of the liquor license, which he's indicated to them he's willing to do.
Yeah, so there's one that's clearly an issue with that, you know, but what will they turn into? And the rest of them all seem to be doing pretty well.
And the, the one that's way down there also wasn't even advertising food predominantly, was advertising the gaming, and drinks, specials on drinks and stuff. So we want them to actively start promoting the restaurant. That's the one we went, and they weren't even open for lunch, so we're monitoring it.
Right.
Good.
So with that being said, the last thing I wanted to hit on, and then a couple of things is, I'm talking with the mayor, and it's always been, and I'm glad Bruce is here as well, too, is advertisement signage. We have no regulation, other than just normal ordinances on signage on windows and A-frames. But the question on A-frames came to me, because we had some businesses in the downtown business district having two A-frames instead of one. I went out last Friday, and this Monday, took photos of everywhere, and then saw only with one. So they are in compliance, but the question is, if you have five businesses in a row, all with an A-frame out there, what image does that give? Is that the image you're happy with? So be it, or if not, something to change. So what I did is, I took, and hopefully you can see this here. This is the A-frame in front of the Potbelly on Cass Avenue. It's turned sideways, so I don't know if he turns it towards Cass Avenue, so you can read it, but it's sideways around. One side is for alcohol, the other side is for gaming. Same spot, same sort of block, this was taken in front of Absolutely Delicious, looking to the north. And you can see there's a sign here for Johnny Blitz, and then you can see the Uptowns further up the, up the way. Looking to the south, in front of the Uptown.
Potbelly.
Potbelly, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's the Uptown always on your mind.
I'll show Uptown in a second. Here's the Potbelly one to the side, there's also Johnny Blitz facing, you know, so you can see it on Cass Avenue as you're driving by. At the Uptown, I got two pictures, this is the front of the Uptown. I didn't realize their signage was like that, so I'm going to be checking with boat enforcement to make sure that they're in compliance with our ordinance. But here's the A-frame out on the parkway, which I don't believe, I don't know if that's permissible or not. And then you'll see the signage where everything looks more gaming than it does.
I have, I have to say, that's exactly what I don't want, if I had an opinion.
I'm with you.
I think we all don't want all signs being gaming.
Yep.
Especially out in the walkway.
Yeah.
And then, like I said, we, that's something we can work on together.
Bruce has got his hand up.
A you.
Do they take those A-frames in at night?
They're supposed to.
They're supposed to, that's the rule, okay.
And John Zemenek, you might be the better authority on this, but we just need to be careful. Governments can regulate the size of signs, the height of signs, where signs are placed, but when you start saying what a sign can have on it, what the content of a sign is, it's a very legal territory, so just be aware of that.
Of course.
We don't have to allow the A-frame, oh, go ahead, John.
No, Bruce is absolutely right, but in the context of a liquor license regulation that applies to all video gaming establishments, to prohibit A-frame signs in the public sidewalk would be appropriate and legal and constitutional.
So that's something we can view, look at as we progress with this issue.
And then also, I know in the liquor ordinance, you cannot have your entire window covered, you know, officers going by, and I should be able to flip inside. Uptown, you can see inside, but not very clearly, so that's, I never, I didn't realize it was like this, even it's right across the dray, dray tracks. But it's something that I caught this week, or yesterday, when I was doing this, so.
I think we got a 60% ordinance that says you cannot cover more than 40%. You got to have 60% of it open to the public. So we have a couple of those we need to remind.
And we'll, we'll, we're going to look into it, we're just not going to make a snap judgment, and then we'll, you know, give them a chance to rectify it, I believe, at first, and if not, then we take the direction. We just, normally, we don't just, okay, go and hit them with a fine right away. We kind of seek cooperation first. And this is the Uptown, that's the A-frame outside, and then I believe both sides were video gaming. Uncle Bob's, the A-frame is right here, it's closer to the corner of Dallas and Cass. Here's his driveway, here's the front of his building. It's out of the way, as you can see, it's not hampering anybody walking by, it's not hampering any snow removal. But it's just, it's just a way to show you. Here's Fremont Grill, Fremont Grill has one there. I don't know if he turns it sideways or not, but he has it out in front of his building that way. So I just showed these as an example of what I saw this last week when I went out. And again, for purposes of discussion in the future, where do we want to go, what do we want to do?
And I think that's pretty much what we wanted to do this evening, is get everybody thinking about any new regulations or gaming for Class 23 for next year. So nothing needs to be done tonight, it's basically, you could see the numbers, dollar numbers, is very favorable. And the ones who don't have it is either not open that much, and maybe closing early. And you can see others that are taking advantage of the gaming. Again, maybe not in the bars, so to speak, the one class, but the cafes and the ones that have, they're, they came in and said the ages could be 55 to 75-year-old women, and they pretty much hit it right on, that older, even couples, well, not you. And that's when I went into one, there was five machines, and all older, in my age group, and older, were sitting there, and that's when the guy said, hey, you're not going to be able to get on for a couple hours. He said, they're not going anywhere, so.
Well, that's also, I mean, the corporate-owned ones are all named-
After women.
Over Stella Dottie.
Right.
And I think Spencer is doing in them kind of a justice by saying they got 95% revenue. From the ones I talked to, they probably don't sell anything, you know?
Yeah, we, we, I talked to one owner several years ago, and she opened up my eyes. She said, she goes, my customers, and she owned the cafe, don't want to drink, they don't want to eat, they just want to come in and game. So they may buy a bottle of water, they, very rarely do they buy anything, they don't order anything to eat yet, even though she has food there. She goes, they bring their own water in, they sit, and they want to game, and that's it. Leave them be, and you don't bother them, she said, that's the other thing. You let them be, you don't bother them.
And again, that's tonight, that, go ahead.
I think I was going to say the same thing, I mean, this is for tonight, if you had anything right away, I think you've already expressed it, but this topic will revert to administration finance committee, that next one's in two weeks, and bring your thoughts then.
And if you have any question, you hear something, please let the manager know, and he'll refer it down to me, so I can do research and get you answers. You know, if you bring it up in a meeting setting, I will definitely get that done. But if there's something that, you know, all of a sudden after today, you think of something, let him know, and he'll get it down to me, and we'll, we'll rush your concern or question.
Make it sound like you're in the basement or something.
They let me up yesterday, no, I didn't.
But again, everybody's going to have their own opinion, but we'd like to hear that because as moving forward, we want to be unified, that we're going to implement an annual fee for, for Class 23. We're going to limit signs for the alcohol side. So those are things, think about, and we'll bring it back at, Linda will be in charge of it next time, so.
And you may see a thing in other communities, I know, and I won't mention the name of the community, but every time I drive by, it's about a stretch of a mile, like, say, Agon Avenue, and every business, I mean, literally, almost every single business has the A-frame or the signs flashing in the window and everything.
Too much.
And I'm like, yeah, it's just, it-
You head east, don't you?
Yeah, it's east, yes, it is. It's in Cook County, that's what it is.
All right, any other comments or questions? I think, thank you, Tom, that was eye-opening to begin with.
My goal was seven o'clock.
You did.
Yeah, all right.
And if Bruce didn't say anything, you would have made it. I need a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait.
Can we miscellaneous?
Miscellaneous, anybody got any, seeing that I need a motion to adjourn? Motion.
Motion adjourn, Nero.